Well, anyway, at seven o'clock, call the meeting to order. For those that don't know, we are being recorded. Anyway, um, adoption agenda, is there any items to be added to the agenda? Hearing none, somebody wish to move the agenda, ma'am, as presented? Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, moving on to the minutes of the July twenty-third. Is there any errors, missions, questions?
Also.
Okay, can we believe it? Any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, moving on to the delegations. If Kim wants to introduce our newest employee.
Yeah, before we get started with the employee recognition, I'd like to introduce our new peace officer, Craig Arlett. He's coming to us from, he's living in Lethbridge and has experience in commercial vehicle enforcement. And well, hopefully, you saw on the agenda tonight, appointments by law officer. And then we'll wait his provincial appointment on, as soon as we can get the paperwork through, which when we checked last week, looks like it, hopefully, will go through fairly quickly. And so, great start today, started going through the computer and whatnot. And this is our council and paper ready, this is Craig.
Thank you. And when we get to that spot, we'll, that's what we'll coordinate. Okay, so we'll move on to four-one, which was our delegation, the employee staff awards. So we have three members of our staff that have been here for a period of time. So we'll start off with Bonnie, who's been here. You gotta stand over here somewhere, I think it is. Kim can get you on.
We'll get you on, Kim.
Okay, so anyway, Bonnie's been with us for ten years as the rectorrector. Now she's slash moved into the new position that just was created. So she started work for the rec board in two thousand and thirteen, but you know, or two thousand and eight, I should say, until the rec board was amalgamated into the department of the town in two thousand and thirteen. And she's been in the place since two thousand and eight, so this is her tenth year. And now, like I said, her new role since February is community services manager. I'm not sure why we have all these titles, but we do. And so anyway, it's been a great honor to have you for an employee for ten years. So there is your. So I'll start at the bottom, I believe, this one is the top. Good thing I checked that. Okay, so thank you very much, Bonnie, there's, we really appreciate you being with us for ten years. And hopefully, you're here for substantial longer.
I know.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Okay. The next one is, we have Jeff, if you'd like to come up. And yours is on the top. Jeff's been with us for five years, he's been a member of our community longer. And it says here, started February second, two thousand and thirteen as a laborer, has spent all the time with public works. He's worked in numerous departments throughout the, throughout the town. Over at the arena, probably, probably almost the most to a degree. And then has moved around and substantially through all through our community. And so you'll see Jeff and some of the other public works folks driving around. And I'd like to especially say how great you did the job on putting that line up the center of Main Street. I mean, he pushes this little cart, painting this line up the center of Main Street. And back when Kim was doing it, I think there was more bumps or humps because the line wasn't always as straight as it is with Jeff.
Earlier in the morning.
Yeah. And you know, they're out there in the morning, early, you know, doing the lines and the curbs and stuff. And it's just great and, you know, I really appreciate your five years. And hopefully, we'll get another five or ten or fifteen years out of you yet, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then our last award goes to Karen, or award, or.
Recognition.
Recognition for, you know, time spent with our community. And Karen, Karen is a, is a, has been around in the community all her life. Lived in the Champion area, I guess, Champion Balkan, I'm not sure. Which, she lives on the Coal Mine Road, which has always been a toss-up, which side of the road is in the Balkan area, which side of the road is in Champion? She went, yeah, she went to Champion.
She lives on the right side of the road.
She was on the south side of the road, so.
West, Chris, Jeff?
Yeah, that's right, so anyway. So Karen's been an employee since two thousand and thirteen. And her position kind of has revolved around into lots of different areas in our, in our organization. But anyway, for the last five years, she's been as an executive assistant. And so, you know, again, you know, it's been, she's the one that quite often, you focus on, you pull me in, you'll talk to Karen. If you want to know something, you talk to Karen, and then if not, she'll put you in to talk to Kim.
Then I'll ask Karen what she told you.
But anyway, right, yours, thank you very much. And again, hopefully, you're with us substantial more. And great, well, thank you very much. You can stay, Jeff.
You don't want to stay, ma'am?
Okay. It sounds great, thank you. So anyway, that's our, you know, employees' staff recognition. And it's great to see that we've had some employees that have stuck with us and stayed longer than a couple of years. And it's much appreciated what they do for us. Yes, somebody wish to move the delegations? Laura? Any question on four point one, Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, moving on to correspondence, we have six items there. So the first one is that appreciation letter. I believe everybody has had an opportunity to probably read it and peruse it. It looks nice. I appreciate that, you know, I'm not sure what time of day she came and the museum was closed. There is a phone number, I believe, on the museum, you know, saying that if you want to tour, you can use it. But, but again, it was, it was nice that, you know, she thanked the community for the, you know, participating and being able to stay, so. Any question on the?
We can just go through all of them if you want.
Yeah, okay, so Kim just suggested maybe we'll go through all of them and approve them unless there's something comes up. Okay, and then the request letter from the historical society of, they, we approved, you know, to put in water, temporary water service and for the grass. Now they're rethinking their allocation of the space, so. Again, I don't know if we need to really do anything.
We just pass it on to public works so that they don't do the work before we hear the final.
Okay, and then the next one is the ministerial order from the minister. And there is a letter here from them.
And it doesn't affect us at all?
Yeah, because both of them, we have started on the ICF, ICF and the IDP have been started, so.
And the extension doesn't, we don't qualify for any of the extensions. Continue working the way we work.
Okay, any question on that one, Paul? And then moving on to the approval, which is kind of nice, we've done the work.
First time.
So, you know, this is approval to do the work that we've finished and. Sorry, questions on that one, Paul? The next one, most of you probably have never met Merlin, but Kim, Kim and I.
I've worked with him for twenty years now.
Have, have met the gentleman and, and I think it would be appropriate, if we want, to send a letter thanking him for his services to the, to their organization and representing our community. I think it's, he has been a good spokesperson for Ford Ascend before that, back in the days of Calgary Power. And so, you know, it might be appropriate for us just to say, thank you very much for your time spent. And forty-two years is a substantial long time for an employee to be with an organization, plan the ranks. But I don't know, what do you guys think, should we? Okay, Laura moves that we just forward, you can craft a.
That we send correspondence thanking Merlin for his service to the community.
Yes, okay. Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, and then the Volpeon letter to the council for appreciation for being able to participate in the event. And I'm not sure if any of you have gone on to that website and. Like there's a.
For feedback.
For feedback.
Monkey survey?
I, I'm not sure, I didn't go on it yet, I just.
Yeah, I heard one, survey monkey, okay.
Yeah, survey. Okay, and if not, I haven't, I haven't done it yet, I just got in.
It takes like two seconds, but it's very short.
I think it's like six or nine questions.
Yeah, it's, it's probably one of the, so easier ones.
Okay. But anyway, it's, it was, you know, it's nice to see them. That Cory, she participated with Spock Days and she's quite into, you know, thanking the people for participation. And then I think it's kind of nice to get a letter to say, you know, hey, thanks for being there for whatever you were at and could participate in, so. Any questions on any of those six or five? If not, somebody wish to file the correspondence? Paul? Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, moving on to six-one, which is the directional sign for the cemetery. It's quite self-explanatory, again, it explains that, you know, we're the ones that would happen to require, ask for permission for the sign to be put up.
Well, I think unless you're in the motorcade, it could be very hard to find.
Yes.
If you were just left on your own to find it, so I think that's a good idea.
And this was something that Norma addressed when she spoke to the past council about the things that they were trying to do to raise awareness about our cemetery. This was one of the proposals, so it's on the list of things that councils in support of. This basically brings it so that we actually make the application. The other thing that we'd like to do with that, you probably saw as part of my report, is they, we also discussed that it may be something that we can get permission from Alberta Transportation to put something up for the CRC as well. We'll put in our application that we are a partner in it.
That, that, I think that's, you know, again, that was feedback from, from the community. Information day that was held is signage. And I, I think it's something that, you know, this fall or in the spring, when we kind of do some strategic planning, is something we need to sit down and discuss signage, because it's something that we lack. And just, it's something that I think we need to move forward. But this one here, because it's on a numbered highway, we have to ask permission from Alberta Transportation. And so it's.
And it kind of fell into the, when we, when we were reading the application, the community rural facility kind of fell into the definition. So we thought it might be a good, good spot to add it in there if council wishes. If you're not, if not, the cemetery is straightforward as well.
It would be nice to see both, Todd?
I would think it would be proven to, especially on a numbered highway. I mean, we have no choice but to ask for their permission for the side of the job.
And I think back to two thousand and thirteen with High River. A lot of people didn't know where to go.
So what's your thoughts, folks, should we on a path for?
I'm with them.
Okay, Laura moves that we apply for both. Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, moving on to six-two, request for stop signs. Again, it's quite self-explanatory, there's two, two areas of concern. Have been brought forward to the association, homeowners association out there, of requests for stop signs. If you get an opportunity to drive around in the Allen subdivision or the Allen Greens.
Allen Acres.
Or Allen Acres, there's very few, if any, stop signs. And, you know, it might be something that we wanted to contemplate. And, you know, maybe we've got an opportunity to, with our new employee, employee, to do a little bit of studying on it and see, you know, flow of traffic and see if it's a concern or a question. Go ahead.
Am I reading the map right here? Is this the very top end of Whispering Creek up there?
Yes.
Whispering Greens.
The Whispering Greens.
Yes.
The, the ver, the farthest to the, I guess you'd call it, to the south, and then the next one. When you get farther to the, to the north, when we first go into there, there's two stop signs, but they're put in by their, because it's a bare land condominium. Or is it four? Four, sorry. Okay, la.
I, I was just gonna ask that, is it, because it's condominium, does the town, like they're supposed to be taking care of their streets, or how does that work?
This, this is the Whispering Greens and Fairways and Whispering Greens Avenue. And of course, they're not condominium.
Yeah.
They're, they're.
They follow the route. They just look after.
They just, they just haven't, some of it hasn't, the Fairways and Whispering Greens Avenue haven't been takeovers by the town yet, because of course, the substantial completion on the development agreement hasn't been completed yet, so. But they're working on that, that's something that we're ongoing with the, with the developer all the time.
So it would have been a developer's responsibility to a certain amount?
Those, those intersections, there was no stipulation in the development agreement for them. And that's because the majority, again, like the Allen subdivision, the town, until they get requests and try to do traffic studies, that sort of thing, or based on safety, don't. We, we consider all of our intersections as under control. So all of the signs that have been put up in town have been done through council motion based on.
Yeah, like concerns, traffic flows, and again, it's usually generated by the ratepayers, which these two signs have been, this group has come to us and asked us to put signs up. Now, again, we haven't done any, you know, number counts or look at, you know, blind areas at all. So we can approve it or, or, you know, suggest that we do some number counts or looks, look at those areas and, and, you know, ask for response back from our employee.
I would like to see us get some number counts on it before we approve it.
And, I mean, you know, that doesn't stop, but from, you know, at least looking at the process and, and saying, is there, I mean, we've had other requests, you know, four-way stops and stuff like that. And we've gone back and kind of did some numbers and felt that, you know, we'd like to leave it a status quo or add them or delete them or. At one time, there was almost a stop sign on every corner, and then that kind of disappeared. And pros and cons to both, it is a concern by their citizens up in those, that area. So I, I think that, you know, we could do.
Big thing that we look at when we do that is flow of traffic. That's why there is, you know, there is no stop sign on Main Street, other than the two busiest intersections at the end, that, that sort of.
Just a question for, like it's three hundred and seventy-five dollars?
That's just to put it in, that's based on our fees by law, based on purchasing a sign post, using the postal logger for, for an hour with the operator and having a laborer there for an hour.
And then what kind of, is it any additional cost to do a study, or is that just part of?
Oh, no, they would just be the time of the peace officer to figure out traffic flows, whether there's safety concerns. Because that, basically, your stop signs in any traffic control are based on safety. So if there's people, you know, rolling through the stop sign, not obeying the, because an uncontrolled intersection, which these things are, still fall under the traffic act and you have to yield right away, just like any other intersection, so. So if there's people not following that, and it becomes to a point of not being safe, that's when we look at traffic control measures.
Actually, that kind of raised the question, do we need a stop sign or a yield sign?
That's, you need to determine that based on, based on your information.
Yeah. So does, just say that Whispering Greens and Fairway Drive were owned by a condominium, would they have the right to put a stop sign up?
Yes, because it's on their.
Dry land condominium, they, they own their property.
Doesn't have to be the town per se.
That's why Whispering Green, Whispering Creek and those four entrances and Meadowlark Way have installed their own stop signs, because they're dry land condominiums. Felt that their homeowners association and their condo association felt that they would benefit from that, so.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts or? Direction, yes.
I would say we get a little bit more information if you see what the traffic flow was up here.
Refer to the peace officer to be brought back to council after adequate information is collected.
Okay, so George Lee moves, let me refer this.
Just direct the peace officer to gather information and bring it back to council.
Okay. Any questions, thoughts?
For administration, really.
Yeah, administration.
Do we have a, need to have a timeline on that?
Uh, no, because, you know, this will give an opportunity to, you know, try and pick time for it. I, I think, anyway, I mean.
Part of that collecting the information will be talking to the homeowners association as well.
Just to make sure that everybody is.
And he's here to hear that, so.
Okay, any other questions, thoughts? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, moving on to the tax recovery sale. So once a year, we take a look at lands that potentially come up. And this is the time.
We potentially have three, but of course, we have to sell eight.
Pick a date, and then they have it up, they have up to that date to come in and make a.
They do before the auction.
Yeah.
This, we generally pick the second week of October every year. So it's a pretty sketchy Monday. Been waiting to see if payment will come in.
Okay, la. Okay, la moves it. Pick October fifteenth and set the conditions of.
Yeah, and you're comfortable with those conditions, just having a certified appraiser, which we'll use our assessor for, and that'd be cash check.
Okay. Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried. Okay, moving on to the administration's report on Jameson Road improvements. And everybody have a chance to open up a petition that was signed and.
If you do want to talk about this, petition will have to close at eating, and then I can bring it up. But it contains a very chunk of FOIC information, so.
But if not, it's quite straightforward, they fulfill the requirement of getting a majority.
And the basis of the petition is not until the water and sewer was at the same time. And really, that based on conversation comes down to not having the funds to be able to do that work, so.
But because we have a motion on the books to proceed, we have to have a motion to, to not proceed.
Were they aware that it was going to be a huge change to?
Yeah, yes, I did, I did let them know what the costs were involved. And based on that information, we internally had a conversation. Because of substantial change in the scope of the project, council will be able to look at it during budget time in October, see if there's a way of putting money away in the long term to.
Either move it forward.
Continue with the project or.
And with regret, make the motion to not proceed.
Okay.
You know, we can't comment. But we are recording.
Okay, any question on la, Paul's motion at all, or? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, moving on to community peace officer appointment.
So his appointment will be as a bylaw officer, by law enforcement officer.
Pardon me?
So his appointment will be as a bylaw enforcement officer until such time as he's appointed by the province as a peace officer.
Oh, okay, so.
But the MGA does require that he do an oath of office to be a bylaw officer for the town, so.
Okay, so any questions on this proposed motion? Okay. Laura.
No, it just.
Laura, her hand was higher. Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Based, based on that motion, having the mayor execute the oath of office in order for Greg to get working, I have the oath of office here, Greg can read from it. He indicated that he would turn on the Bible and not take an affirmation, so I will, you guys do that right here.
So I will give this to you so you can read it, you probably know it by heart.
So oath of office, bylaw enforcement officer, I Gregory Arlett of the city of Lethbridge in the province of Alberta, make oath and say that I will well and truly serve in the office of bylaw enforcement officer for the town of Vulcan, without favor or affection, malice or ill will, that I will to the best of my power cause the peace to be kept and preserved, and that I will continue to hold the said office of bylaw enforcement officer. I will do to the best of my skill and knowledge discharge all duties and responsibilities thereof faithfully and according to the law, so help me God.
Now, Richard. Do you want a blue pen or?
I might have got a blue one there.
No, blue one, sorry. Great, thank you very much. Yes.
Thank you both so much.
So do we have to cover over peace officer on the side of the vehicle?
Well, until he gets his provincial appointment.
Yeah, okay, sounds good. Okay, any other questions on this? Okay, we'll move on to the encroachment agreement, six thirteen, yes, la.
I should excuse myself from this discussion as I may have.
A sign on the property?
Yes.
Thank you, la. So noted that la left the meeting at seven twenty-seven. Okay, any comments, thoughts? I think everybody knows where this piece of property is. They, so many people believe that they own right up to the sidewalk and, because they have to maintain it, and.
Fairly significant encroachment, it's almost six meters.
Yeah. It's almost the whole width of the, the boulevard. Boulevard juicy fifteen feet from the edge of the, the.
But that end of Main Street has an extra large boulevard, so.
Yeah.
Uh, but having said that, that fence has been in place for, since before the last, or well, since the last RBR. So it's been in there for a significant amount of time, so. Basically, the encroachment agreement allows the fence to stay in place until such time as repairs or to remove it and or fix the encroachment, so.
Personally, I will say this, because it has happened in the past. I look, I'm opposed to this because of the, we have done this in the past and new people come along, replace the fence in the exact location that it is, because the fence does not require building permit. So they think that's their property, and so we have three pieces of property in this town that have had that happen. It's a fence, folks, so I've said my piece.
So can there be anything written into the sales agreement?
Well, the way, the way that your encroachment agreement says that they will.
They will not do anything, yeah, but then you can't do anything beyond that.
No, it's registered right against the property, it's an encroachment agreement.
Yeah. Okay.
And, but, you know, the other three, they've replaced the fence.
In the same spot.
Same spot.
Because you don't require a developer.
Because you don't have to develop a permit or permits, yeah.
Is this the way that, you know, like when sending out for yearly taxes or any kind of communication that can be included with that, to make sure that there is, you know, that they know about it? And if that comes up, it's something they're.
Well, I mean, it's registered, so every time they go to sell this piece of property, it comes up. Every time the piece of sale is built, it, it comes up. And it's encroaching on the town's property, but it's also theoretically encroaching on the neighbors. But that, that's, the neighbors is a bit of a misnomer to a degree, because who owns the fence? Does the neighbor own the fence or do you own the fence, you know? Does the neighbor own the fence, or do you own the fence, you know? So there's always an argument over the fence, fence never used to be an issue between neighbors, because, you know, good neighbors, men, sometimes they put it right down the middle of the property line, so three inches one on one side, three inches around the other. Some people say, no, I'm gonna put it all on mine. And, but, you know, this one here encroaches on the town, and like it's, like Kim said, it's not a small encroachment, it's a large, but then there's two other ones that are large encroachments on town property too, and we gave them permission, and they've replaced the fence in the same location.
So if we were to say no to this, does that mean they have to take it down?
They'd have to move the fence.
Or move it to the right?
Yeah, or else try and sell it with a, a piece of property that passes.
And then have the new owners try to do that.
Yeah.
And it, it can complicate a sale, that sort of.
Now, we have done this in the past, so don't get me wrong, you know, we have done it in the past, and, and lots, you know, of encroachment agreements, matter of fact, that's what it says in here, that we'll just use our.
Our existing.
Or, or regular encroachment agreements, uh, but there are pros and cons.
So is this something we need to look at back at the MPC level?
Well, no, MPC, they, they have no proof, they have no jurisdiction on encroachments onto the town property, and neither does Nancy, she can, if it's within.
She can approve in less than a, uh, inside, uh, foot, I believe.
So, but anything over that, then, comes to us, um, and, and again, you know, we have given this permission in the past. And, and, you know, most people probably wouldn't even realize there's an issue until the property goes for sale. And especially now with real property reports being, you can't have anything over, I think it's three or four years old, or whatever, or you have to have another one, or, and even on this one here, because it's been surveyed, if they alter that fence, they're going to have to get it re-surveyed and prove that they have altered it to the proper, so, I mean, there, there's an expense to the homeowner to, number one, to move the fence, and number two, to have it re-surveyed to make sure that it's in the right place. The easiest method is for us to give permission to.
Let's do it right.
You know, so, I mean, there's, there's definitely pros and cons, because we have done this in the past, folks, you know, not, not, not.
Not for this property, but other properties.
Other properties in town.
But if we do it for one, we're better just doing it for everybody, right?
I, I think you're right, I mean, you know, um, I think you're right. But again, it, it's registered against their title, and they know it. The people that own it or sell it or buy it, they know that there's a registered caveat against that piece of property.
There, there's other situations that we deal with, that exactly the same sheds in the backyard encroaching, uh, to the property line. They're given basically two options, they either move the shed, or they ask the town for encroachment agreements, and you guys, depending on the situation, grant the encroachment agreement, or make them move the shed, in this situation, uh, it's the same thing, you either grant the encroachment, you have to look at each one individually, not as a, not as a whole, the rules there, the whole reason for this agreement is to look at it as an individual situation, so.
And again, it, it's not the people that own the property that, right at the moment, that put that fence there.
They bought it that way.
They bought it that way with the fence being encroached.
But they, did they know that?
I assume, assume not, I, I don't, because it's never come to.
Because they bought it quite a while ago.
Yeah, but it's never come to us.
No.
With this encroachment agreement on it. This is the first time we're being asked for it.
No, on this property.
On this property. So, again, they might have never known that they, that fence encroached.
Some people have trees like that.
Oh, you betcha.
Yeah, we.
And, and the, and the new property owners, they're, they will know it, because.
This will be registered.
This will be registered against the property.
They won't necessarily change the fence.
Not necessarily, and if they do, they might put it back in the same location, who knows, I, I don't know.
Well, and with that, as long as the town keeps on top of it, they shouldn't be allowed to put it back in the same spot, but we would have to catch it when, when they're ripping it down and put it back up.
Right. But then that's part of our problem too, by not asking for a permit on a, a fence.
On a fence, that's right.
Maybe that's what we should be, uh, adjusting.
Contemplating, now, and again, part of it, there's two reasons why we don't, it's, it's like a shed under a certain size, you don't ask for it, is because, um, there's a cost to the.
Having somebody inspected.
Inspected the horse, and then also, generally, it's, it's, it's a fence, it's not, you know, it's not a permanent structure. You know, ten, ten posts and ten walls, and you've moved the fence, but, but again, we have done it in the past, allowed it to happen.
Well, this fence has been there for thirty years, so it's pretty close to permanent.
Oh, you betcha, yeah, yeah, I, I don't know how long it's been there, but it's been there for.
Nineteen eighty-eight.
Is that what's said? Oh, sorry, thank you.
They, it wasn't built in eighty-eight, I know a lot of people, eighty-eight was the last RBR that we had. Uh, that fence was built in, in, till late nineties.
So anyway, what's your thoughts?
Decline.
Yep, if it did, decline, there will be a cost to the homeowner two ways, moving the fence and also getting a real property report. If we approve it, we have the same issues with the other ones, so. That we put faith in the people when they go to move it, or replace it, but they put it back where it belongs, not where it is. So Paul's.
I'll make a motion to decline it.
Okay.
Any questions on the floor?
I don't know, I just don't think it's fair in a way that, like you said, there's other properties in town that have done it, and now, all of a sudden, we're painting these guys for it, so.
Yeah.
They have it up for sale.
Yeah.
Discussion, discussion, motions on the floor.
Movements on the floor, so. So what's your thoughts, folks? George D feels that it's not fair to the.
Is there any way in terms of, you know, like just talking with the homeowner, or asking them to come in, or what have you, and say, hey, this is, you know, just to be completely clear, this is the situation, and say, okay, you know, we want to put an agreement in place that within the next five years it can be replaced, or it's something where it's not quite.
The homeowner's doing this so that they can sell the property.
Yeah, so it'll be the new homeowners that we have to make the agreement with, not the.
The agreements with the current owner so that they, they can sell the property, so we, the reason why it's here is because we already have that conversation. You have two options.
Gotcha.
Remove the fence, or apply for an encroachment agreement, so.
Now, I mean.
They apply for the.
And, and as, they might, they might realize that we've had other ones that were, you know, approved, now.
I'm speaking from having moved fences for people that did not comply. People I was dealing with bit the bullet and moved the fence.
And because it is a front yard fence, the new owners may not want to have a fence there, which would solve all their problems, you know?
Right, yeah.
Because I don't think there's any other fences along there, is there? It's all pretty moonlight.
I think the property line's quite a ways back, if you, if you look, it's fairly close to the front of the houses, so there, there is no other on that stretch that has fences.
So, and pardon me if this question is obvious, but in terms of it saying about moving the fence, can we not just request that they take it out, and if they want to replace it at a later date in the proper area, they can, but it's just the removal of it?
No, I think we have to say, this is where your property line is, fence cannot exceed past it.
You're not allowing it to encroach onto.
Yeah, and so, by, if this motion is passed, they have two choices, is to remove the fence, or to sell a piece of property that doesn't comply to.
And then the next owners won't get a, uh, a compliance certificate.
Yeah. So then, you know.
Basically just passes the buck.
The new homeowners have that choice again, we move the fence, or move the fence.
It's tough because you're dealing with something from, a mistake from years ago.
Years ago, but again, you know, like I said, and maybe Gerta's got a good point there, maybe this is an opportunity for us to go back to and say, we're going to request permits for fences and sheds and whatever you build.
You know, like, do we do ourselves to death with a thousand things?
More bureaucracy, yeah, you know, I mean, not more bureaucracy, yeah, we do create more bureaucracy by it, but I mean, we had houses that weren't put into property, now, if I can, you look at that house, it's, even there, it's not perfectly square on the lot. Which is pretty good considering the guy that built it.
The size of it, yeah.
Well, at some point, we have to start getting everything between the lines, if you know what I mean, right, everything has to be pulled into.
This encroachment agreement would allow it to stay, but will not allow it to be replaced.
Legally replaced.
Well.
If they don't talk to us about it and we just do it, that's the risk that we take.
Yeah.
But we also have a gentleman sitting in this room that's going to watch that stuff.
And we have no repercussions like a fine or anything if they do put it back again in the wrong place?
Well, well, we haven't done it with any of the other ones.
No, but you could technically, that's a breach of contract for the, for that agreement, so you could.
You couldn't have taken it to court.
Yes, if they, if they bought it.
Yeah.
If they bought it.
And there's no way to do a temporary kind of.
Well, this does, this, this is.
You allow for it up until, uh, they need to make changes to it.
Yeah, but that doesn't, I mean, they could replace it at ten o'clock at night, because they were going to know until the next morning.
Right.
Uh, like I said, we do encroachment agreements.
You betcha.
They're sometimes a lot easier when they're on a garage.
Well, yeah.
With a fence, a fence opens it up for a lot of discussion, because how much work is it to move a fence?
Yeah, but the cost of moving a fence is substantially less than trying to move a garage or garage pad, or, um, you know, e- even some of the sheds, you know, sometimes some of the sheds are pretty fancy and pretty, you know, and they know that if, for some reason, that they're, especially in a right-of-way, if something happens, it's, they're at their own expense, but, but this one here, I mean, it's, in a way, again, it's, it's a fence, which is easier to move, but still, we have done it in the past. But we do have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion, questions, comments, before we call for the question? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of Paul's motion to deny this request? Opposed. It's defeated, so the encroachment agreement is approved. Okay, so you want to call Lyle back?
Forty-two.
Okay, moving on to six point seven, since Lyle is back, and, street closure.
The, this request has been amended, the motion be amended, uh, if we can, she's requested that the street closure happen at seven thirty AM instead of nine thirty AM. Just based on the planning, everything's going really well, she's talked to the majority of the owners on Main Street about this event, and she's been really proactive, she was in again today, talking to Bonnie, getting some more feedback, and, uh, part of that, she knew it was coming to council tonight, so, unless you have any questions on it, which I'm sure you will, uh, but just so that you know, that when you do vote to make that motion, we'd like to amend nine thirty to seven thirty AM.
And the seven thirty is, is similar to what we do for show and show.
Shine.
Or, um, even almost park days parade, we do it earlier to allow people not to park there, so that they can set up their stuff and not be incumbent by, you know, people having to get, find people and have them move, so. So that the ch- time change is not much different, it, um, they're, they're doing it as a fundraiser for, for whatever organization that wishes to take part, and, um.
And the business owners along the streets are okay?
She's been getting signed, uh, she's actually been stopping by visiting them and having them sign a, uh, a waiver saying that they, that she's talked to them, that they, they're in favor of it. Uh, she had a fairly good stack in today, still hadn't talked to them all, uh, because of course she was out currently, we can't do it, so, so. Hadn't talked to them all, but she had a pretty good stack today when she was in, and it, uh, sounds like the businesses are, are, are in favor of this, uh. She's been in talking to Bonnie, Jenny, and Grant, uh, and they're pretty supportive, ran a vice due today, and, uh, of course, no impact from public works, other than, uh, blocking the road off, because of our other events, it's a fairly straightforward procedure.
So can we get her to work for the rec department?
We might do some fundraising of our own. So, uh, the map that she drew was a little bit chaotic, but, uh, gives you the general idea of what she wants to accomplish. It took me a minute or two to kind of weed through everything, but, uh, yeah, no, uh, she has a very good plan that she's trying to bring together, and ample amount of time to do it, so. That's the information that she provided, so.
So is this going to be in conjunction or separate with the family fall fair?
Oh, it's a separate thing.
Will they still be having, will the rec department still be having the family fall fair?
Yes, I believe so.
Yes.
Is it the next weekend?
I'm. Without the leisure guide that never leaves my desk.
No, that's okay, I was just curious, yeah.
No, I don't know that off the top of my head.
It's another opportunity to try and track people into the community and do something different.
This was, this was based on the, uh, on a lot of the feedback they got from that Taste of Vulcan that they did during spark days, they had a really good response to that, so this kind of, you know, ideas always running on how people can fundraise.
I think we should give it a thought. I mean, it's.
So is that a motion?
There's a, there's a line there for your name in that motion.
Laura moved it.
I think it sounds like a great idea.
I think it's good too, Kristen.
Yeah, well, that's, I mean, especially with the amount of effort that she's put in it, and working with, you know, the town and rec and stuff, I think really says a lot.
Well, the way that was explained to me is up by the museum, the daycare is going to run kids' activities, and they will make whatever money comes off that, and whoever runs different sections, they will make the money, their organization will make the money off whatever they decide to put up. So if the Lions do hot dogs, they make money doing their end, the daycare makes money run, doing the kids' stuff, so everybody has a chance to be close together and making money for their own separate organization.
This is funny, because I was just in the Art Healy Center, Healy Art Center this morning, and saying, how do we get more people to come in? Like, not locals, but from outer town to see the amazing stuff they have there, and the artists and artisans that we have in our town. So something like this would really fall right into their.
Right in front of the door.
Well, that's, I mean, how many times have we talked about, you know, well, how can we bring this up, and or how can we do this, but not having a champion to do all of exactly what Julie did, so I think it's a really fantastic opportunity to give it a shot, and fingers crossed, hopefully, it goes fantastic, and it's a start of many.
Okay, any other comments, I have a motion on the floor from Laura. Hearing none, other questions, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. Okay, moving on to the verbal reports. No, I, no, I lied, it's the.
Committee report.
The committee reports.
Minutes from committees.
Goodnight, Mike.
Yeah.
We're, we're almost done, Mike. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so we only have one, um, submitted, I have one that I was supposed to submit earlier, but I didn't.
So it'll be on.
It'll be next month, next month, next month, anyway, we, uh, Michelle got this one in early enough to get into the, any questions at all for elder abuse minutes?
Michelle has already spoken to these minutes.
Okay, hearing none, somebody wish to move, uh, committee reports? Paul, or Lyle?
Go ahead, Paul.
Okay, Paul, moving. Any question on Paul's question? Hearing none, all in favor?
Sorry, wouldn't you decide halfway through my write?
Yeah, okay, so now we'll move on to the committee reports.
House reports.
Yeah. Mr. Taylor.
I absolutely not.
None, okay, move on to.
Well, I had Tourism, and, uh, we looked at, um, kind of rearranging our board members, we're going to take a closer look at that some more at our next meeting, Matt. Um, they're looking at trying to get some quotes on putting up a bird of prey cycling launch ship to match our starship, but put it at the other grand new town, so you'll have a ship where you're coming to vote ex of town. Um, Tourism Grant gave a report, he said Tourism or Vulcan didn't go too bad. Tourism Grant gave a report, he said Tourism or Vulcan didn't go too bad. He said there was a few hiccups, they learned a lot, things that they'll change for next year. We were all at the parade, and that, hopefully, we can get that a little bit bigger next year. They're looking to buy a new Spock figure. The one that's down there, he's a life-size one, but he's, we all agreed that he was pretty creepy looking. He's really scary looking, and who wants their picture taken with them? Like, he looks like something off the planet of the apes. So they're looking at buying a new one, and they did get a quote on him, so. And anything I forgot, Laura will add to that.
I think we let it cover it.
The rec meeting, we didn't have enough for corn, but we've discussed a few things, and anything we talked about was in Bonnie's report already, so. And I went to the Marquee Foundation for Lorna. They said that there is twelve single rooms and there's nobody on the waiting list. They're going to do a scrap plan on November second. Sounds interesting, she gave the information to me. They reviewed their mission statement. They really cut it down a lot before there was a lot to it, and they've made this one very simple and straightforward. And they're renting out one of their rooms for a respite care. Somebody's going in for surgery and they needed their spouse looked after while they're recovering from their surgery, so they're renting out one of the rooms to use it as a respite care, so, I don't know, that was a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe more people will do that. So Lori said she didn't expect any hiccups or anything with it, so she's expecting it to go over the top. And there's, Lori's still looking into options for their scooter ship. So I heard quite a bit about this scooter ship.
They've even got money for it.
They have lots of money for it, yeah.
Yeah.
They have tons of money, but nobody wants to build it.
Scissors, they want a shed for it.
They want a shed. Everybody's too busy, all the contractors in town are just too busy to go get them a quote or anything on it, so, anyway. And that's all I have.
Yeah, okay, any questions for councillor to vote? Okay, moving on to councillor Madison.
I had no meetings, I just attended Spock Days, and it was my first time at a Spock Days parade, and I thought it was pretty cool, because I was in it.
Okay. Any questions for Laura? Moving on to councillor Thomas.
I also was at Tourism, I think Georgia Lee covered most of it. The following night, we had a Vulcan meeting to kind of get things in the works for next year. And one gentleman at the meeting was quite unimpressed that council was in the track station instead of out mingling.
See, the one that was talking to the councillors in my home.
We were in the track station.
Yeah, instead of outside mingling with everybody that was in the parade.
I was outside.
Well, we were outside after, we congregated, I guess, in the...
Oh, I guess, because I was later, that must be why.
Yes, if you had been early, you would have been in the same category as the rest of us, not mingling.
Not mingling, okay, I mingled after, so...
You were out, so you're mingled well. In fact, there was somebody else that thought you were there earlier, but it turned out to be somebody else. Okay?
So yes, I think that's, that covered it. We had a social for the library board at Connie's, it was quite nice, everybody brought some stupendous food, it was delicious.
Okay.
It's good, enjoy it.
Questions for Laura? Okay, moving on to councillor Lyle.
Other than the parade, I have absolutely nothing.
Okay. Were you mingling, or were you, oh, you were inside?
Yeah, I didn't know everybody was inside, so...
You were hovering inside, okay. Councillor Armstrong.
Well, this has got my attention.
I'm going to mingle from now on.
I'm going to mingle forever.
Yes.
I had nothing other than the parade and the banquet or dinner and dance, but I didn't stay for the dance. It was, I don't know, it seemed quite good, even though I think maybe the numbers were down, but I still think it... I just had people staying at our place that gave it great praises and gave me a list of things to bring to Grant's attention, but they're all easily solved, I think. They've been coming for ten or so years, so they would have, I thought, a good idea as to whether it went well or not, so that's good.
Okay, so too.
On that note, I had a conversation with people that attend every year, and they said that they've seen four tourism coordinators come through and the attendance for them. They know people that don't come every year, there's a new one, but then come the year after. So it was one of those things for feedback-wise from the people that actually attend, that it may have been that there was another tourism coordinator in place that they didn't, you know, not as many gave. They had their expectations set very low and said that it more than met their expectations, and they're going to let everybody know about. So that was kind of nice to hear. I heard that at breakfast the next morning.
Sorry, I totally forgot. I've been, not for very long, but stayed for the dinner and dance, and I know that I had probably at least seven people come up to me because I was still in uniform and saying like, hey, it was really great, and the food was good, the entertainment was good, and having fun, and that sort of thing, so.
It's good, good to be... Okay, anything else for Lorna? Okay, I guess on to me. I went to the two functions too. And for Lyle, I think that this year's parade was longer and are, well, better attended than previous, and hopefully next year we'll have a ship to float to go in it. Yeah, it's being worked on right now, and so... Yeah, anyway, I was at, on July twenty-fifth was the waste meeting, Vulcan District Waste Commission meeting. And I do have the report here, I'm sorry I didn't get Karen any time to make it into, but I'll make it into the next one. The main thing that came out was the recycling building that was destroyed by arson. And the cost on that, it's going to be, ended up going to be about a fifty thousand or forty-five thousand dollar cost to replace the building and the bins that were inside and the cleanup of the site. And so it was approved to go ahead, so I'm sure we're going to see in the budget at the end of the year, the solid wastes budget will be out. The insurance company did cover it, they have five thousand dollars deductible. And so because of it, the insurance company is going to come down and they're going to do an analysis of all that facility to see if they're insured properly, and not that it was an issue, it's just that it was a good timing to...
To relook at.
To relook at everything, so. Other than that, I mean, financially, the Waste Authority is right on, on budget, I guess, or for the year. And other than that, I have had, there was three or four or five different conference calls with SEWA. The, we did have a response back from one minister and a couple other people, and so they had some conference calls, and they met with the premier's assistant on Friday. Some of them met with her to go over what's going on. So hopefully it's positive.
Did we finally figure out that SEWA exists?
Uh, yes, a couple rickles there, but, but yeah, it's quite positive, so, you know, everybody's moving forward to get ready for that AGM coming up in September, so.
Do they know when the AGM is, or?
Um, they do, but I'm not sure if I have it here. It's in September, I'll try and get it to us if I don't have it. Sherry. Yeah, no, um...
That's okay.
There is a meeting on August twenty-fourth in Three Hills, and that's when they're going to discuss the parameters of the AGM. But I thought it was in the SEWA, but I know it's in September.
You can let me know when I can forward it to everybody.
If I could go back, yeah, if you can tell me when date it was. Uh, September fourteenth is the AGM. I did book here, and it's in, it'll be in Champion if they, if they alter it, I think it is. But because of the fire that they had in Champion, we booked here too, case, so, but I'm pretty sure it'll be in Champion.
So was it confirmed, eh, that it was arson? They have any kind of timeline in terms of the replacement?
It's being built right now.
Yeah, it's being built right now.
For finishing?
No, they had hoped to have it in by the end of August, but they weren't sure. But they do have, like, they kept the transfer site open all day long, so you can go down there and drop off your stuff. Yeah, no, the building's being built right now, so.
Oh, okay.
It's, the framework's all done, it was done this weekend.
Okay, any other questions for you? Hearing none. Somebody wish to move the... Okay, well...
That's a tie, I think.
Give it to Georgia Lee. I don't know who you, who did you start with?
Well, after, after four years, I've realized it's a lot easier to write GLD rather than Georgia Lee to bold every time. So Georgia Lee got it because it's three letters.
Lyle's four.
You lost by one loss.
Okay, any question on Georgia Lee's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? So it's L for Lorna, L for Michelle, Laura's got L A U, okay.
I'm sure that leaves a little to be desired.
Okay.
Doesn't matter, because you know what it means tomorrow morning.
Karen's getting, Karen's getting pretty good at reading it, too.
Okay, well, move on to the action report for...
And again, I apologize, the gray is not very gray, so anything that's highlighted will come off. I'm going to mess with those colors of gray on my outlook, and eventually, you're not going to be able to see any of the writing on there, it'll just be gone. Shouldn't be too many questions, there wasn't too many, thanks, obviously.
Okay, any questions, comments on this one? Somebody wish to move the insurance parts?
You can do all of them.
Oh, you want to do all together?
You can do it together or, depends on, you've done them together the last little, last...
Okay, so we'll...
Do all the reports.
Yeah, we'll do all the reports unless somebody has a burning desire to move one individually. Okay, we'll move on to the CEO's report.
Another business in there took the week off, of course, that you all know about. Highlights is met with the Fairways Drive developer to work on some ideas that they have to, again, spur development up in that area. They've, they haven't seen any house sales in that, you know, so they're looking at different ideas for the area, and so Nancy and I met with them. Temporary science, that, a lot of, just little, little work in here. Of course, you all read my reports, so you kind of saw the, basically just putting out little fires here and there, and, of course, preparing for hiring a peace officer and ready to start some budget information.
Did you come up with any ways to help spur residential sales in town?
That's a loaded question, Lyle. Nothing groundbreaking that people haven't already thought of, but yeah, no, just more discussions on, on different ideas for, for, specifically their development on there, like cost of housing, needs for housing, that sort of thing, is what we focused on quite a bit. We followed up with iCompass for the soft lunch. We are now on the minutes portion, so we're going to see how, and of course, this last meeting, because we closed one item to the public, but opened it to council, we did a lot of back and forth trying to figure out how to do that properly, and working the kinks out. iCompass is actually quite happy with the pace that we're putting things together and how we're doing, so we will most likely have our web portal up and going in the next couple of months.
I really like this format, I do too.
Thank you.
On this, yeah, I do too.
Yeah, and once you get used to exactly where you're going, the notification will, that it's there, you'll just click on it, it'll just open to where you need it to be, and unless you close a portion of the meeting, it'll be the same as what the public sees. We've done a lot of work with them to get it, we actually thought we should be a lot further ahead, and they actually questioned what it said that we are further ahead than they thought we would be, so, of course, that's because Karen and I aren't afraid to go into the backside of the program and start changing things, which sometimes doesn't work out in our favor. Most of the time, it's pretty good. So, and again, yeah, that's about it. Spend the next week doing this and stuff, and then unfortunately, I'll be taking some vacation as well. That's my report.
Okay, any questions? Okay, we'll move on to the development report.
Pretty much for Nancy, the one highlight was that she did meet with the Historical Society and the Alberta Culture.
Yeah, I saw that.
They went through, and Alberta Culture was going to go back and make some suggestions, because there is some ground funding available as well, and make some suggestions for the Historical Society to take to their next meeting to discuss. It's also nice to see that there were going on at the hospital.
Yeah, yeah.
What did they do with the trees?
What did they do with which?
The trees, the mountain ash.
Um, I think it went to the...
Landfills?
Yeah. I think, they moved much of the bushes, the stuff, the smaller stuff, I think, but the big...
The larger stuff was cut and chipped.
Yeah.
So I was going to get the cutting off one, one of the shrubs, and turned around, it was gone.
See what you do.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Okay, move on to public works.
Stu wanted me to mention that he's been talking to StarTech and the Arena Condenser. They've now got a schedule for it to arrive and installation, but he has concerns with how close it is to the startup, but they're trying to reassure them that they will have it done in time, they figure out about a three-day installation on it, so. But it's on its way, but Stu wanted me to highlight that for council. Other than that, business as usual.
Again, I was really quite impressed with, you know, the crew that Stu has put on the, the sidewalk curved corners and, and, you know, like I said, I've heard lots of comments how they're positive about how lots of small communities don't do as much as we do every year, and it's kind of nice to see, so. And they worked hard to try and get it all done for Show and Shine, which is, I know Main Street's got some other hurts and aches and pains, but at least it's as clean as it can be and...
The chipping of the curves and whatnot has actually helped the paint last longer as well, so it doesn't flake the first time it gets hit.
It looked like they're filling the pluggles in near the highway to the...
The entrance, those guys were in doing that experimental spray.
Or was that what that was, okay.
Yeah, they were in today.
They had it all roped off, they're super exciting.
Yeah, I came in from the other way.
One day.
That's right.
One day and you miss it.
Okay.
How fast it works.
That's right. Anything else on public works? Questions, concerns?
See, on the walking path where they've been doing the ceiling, the cracks. This morning, I was out there, there was actually wire sitting on the cracks that it hadn't seeped through, so that ceiling must be working well.
Yeah. Okay, move on to the community services report.
So how soon before they'll be bringing any ideas to council for the pool?
The RFP's been reviewed by Stu and I, and Bonnie's going to send them out right away, so we're looking at it probably end of, mid to end of October. They have to get, we want to get the price stuff together for that grant application that Lions Club's making for the matching funds, so we're going to have to have the cost then, but then we also want to have an opportunity to talk to the contractors so that you guys can have discussions on how it affects the budget in two thousand and nineteen, because the scheduled plan now is to start replacement in two thousand and nineteen, so. End of August, so we need to get everything in place by now.
Now that the hospital's started, people have been, go with that one, and now they're on this one, so...
Yeah, which is good, nice to see, you know, that, that project, and I think, so, well, one, if, depending on the direction it goes, I mean, if it goes in two, two stages, if it does, I think, you know, you're going to see some huge advantages to both. Um, I think, you know, you're gonna see some huge advantages to both, and, and I think that's, you know, if you're around, I, I took some, I was in Oin, I took some photos of a pool in Oin. And Bonnie, I gave the information to Bonnie, Bonnie will turn, and so she's gonna phone them and see, you know, when it was built, how long it's built. I was really quite impressed, because the liner is, looks so much better than, uh.
Others than you've seen.
Than others I've seen, and I think it was done by the same contractor, uh, but, uh, this one, this one here had no scum line at all. I was really impressed, you know, because, you know, that's one of the toughest spot parts of the, of the liner is that getting rid of that scum, getting rid of that scum line. And this one in Oin was really impressive, it looked really nice.
Some of the people that we talked to, the material, the, uh, that they're using for the liners is better as far as, uh, the buildup of algae and things like that on it, so.
Do they still have to scrub this scum line?
Well, they don't, they don't in Champion, um, they didn't have Louisville Resort either, they just allowed it, no, there is a chemical that you can use, it's supposed to take it off, but Champion tried it and it wasn't successful. And I can't, I'm not sure in these pictures whether I can see the one in Oin, um, what color the top of the liner was, but that's sometimes the way it is, is that they'll use a different color on the very top. But this one here looked like it was white all the way to the top, and, uh, as much as I can see, whereas the one in Champion, they, they use a different color, a blue across the top. And so I don't know whether that was an issue or a concern, or, but, I, I believe it was the same contractor that did both, but I, so Bonnie's gonna check and see. And how old their pool is, and the, you know, type of pool building that they built, this one here was completely concrete, um, whereas, you know, the one that they're proposing for here probably.
We asked for the preference in the RFP to be concrete or equivalent, so it could be con, that concrete and sty, styrofoams and structures there.
Yeah. There is a place in, in, in Clarisone that makes concrete styrofoam walls now, so I mean, it might be a, you know, type of economic, has more economics, because you doesn't have to come as far the distance to build a facility like that too, so, makes it more difficult if you decide that you wanted to add a hole in the wall, but, um, but it's still not.
The first four inches are easy.
Yeah, that's right. And, and I, I think it's kind of nice that we, I mean, not that it makes much difference sometimes, but it's nice to see the tourism's numbers and also the pool numbers. I mean, we saw the re, the reno's too, but it is nice to see what's happened with that.
And that traveling rocks, I just saw today about somebody at the Crook's Nets Palace doing it, and I, I had read this before, and I went, oh, I would have come across one of those rocks and not knowing what to do with it.
Now you do.
Now I do, hide it somewhere?
So you, yeah. Put it in your pocket.
Put it in your pocket, you can keep it if you want.
I know.
Probably be better to hide it.
Yeah. I don't know, my grandkids, they seem to pick up every rock that they can find, so.
I've got little boys that they don't need to have pictures on the rocks, they can still fill their pockets with those.
Okay, so any other questions, comments, thoughts on Bonnie's report? Hearing none, somebody wish to move all the reports, Lyle?
Lyle gets that. Headroom for four lawyers.
Okay, any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Hearing, and we have one more motion.
And it's not three lawyers.
I, I usually leave a pretty big watch to Lyle.
Michelle moves adjournment, any question on Michelle's motion, hearing none, all in favor? It's Karen, thank you. Take care much, folks.